Friday doesn't look like there's much on the agenda.
All right, you ready? All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Thank you, everybody for attending. First thing is the agenda.
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First thing is the agenda.
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing budget amendment twenty-four twenty-five need a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move to open the public meeting.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any written or verbal comments? Any verbal? Anything from you two?
I had like two questions. Kelly, maybe you can answer this on the supervisor's budget. The last item says contract other government. It went up seventy-five thousand. Could you give me a little more? Okay. Okay, and then county attorney, the second item says medical health.
Okay, yes, that's correct. Yep, thank you. Autopsies.
Yeah. And I had on the non-departmental, I had one more here. Building, second line item. Okay, yes. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I think one of the biggest increases was the conservation, but it's the one point two million on the campground.
Yeah, that's that Destination Iowa grant.
Yeah.
Compensation, yes.
Need a motion to close the public hearing then?
I'll move to close.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution ten dash two zero two five budget amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of the February twenty-fifth twenty-five board meeting.
I'll move to accept minutes as provided.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Said date for public hearing on proposed property tax levy.
I'll make a motion to approve March twenty-fifth at nine thirty.
And I'll second.
March twenty-five, nine thirty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Um, on this date, we'll have, at nine thirty, we'll have the proposed property tax levy meeting. And that has to be, I think, for at least thirty minutes. Is that right? So then our regular meeting will follow right after that because we have to hold a separate meeting for the proposed property tax levy.
So the regular meeting will start about nine forty-five or ten. All right, next up is liquor license for Rocket Fuels.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-eighty agreement between Waplo County and Apneus County for equipment sharing on a hydro seeder. Morning, Brad.
Morning. Both counties have been in the need of this particular piece of equipment. They are relatively expensive and not used regularly. You know, it's at best about a third, a quarter or a third time use. So it's a good, good match to have the two counties share a piece of equipment. We both had been doing some shopping, Apneus and Waplo Counties. And this was a relatively low use piece of equipment that was on one of the online auction services. Actually, in a small town not that far away, so we were able to investigate it a little bit, find that it was in good shape. And very minimal use, less than a season's worth. So it's a very good purchase price for a lightly used piece of equipment to be shared by the two counties and.
Yeah, I believe Josh got it for way under price.
Yeah, it was about half the new price.
What was the cost?
In the low forty thousand dollar range. It's been quite a while ago now, several months ago, so I don't have the exact figure.
Yeah, I think he was budgeted for seventy or something to buy.
Yeah, for a new one, we've been in seventy-five thousand ourselves, so we're roughly half the cost for the purchase to be shared fifty-fifty. And it'd be shared maintenance on the machine, you know, any maintenance that needed to be done on it would be done by the party in possession at the time.
I'll make a motion to approve your comment.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You might as well just stay. You're gonna be coming up in a second anyway, so. Treasure copy maintenance contract.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's just the annual contract for the copier. Black Eyed Tiff viewer software renewal for tax and motor vehicle treasures.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Flying hole, flying high sculpture and landscaping project. I think somebody contacted you about this, Brian?
Yes, and Diane, do you want to speak to this?
You think? Okay. Um, Bridgewater Inc., because it's a five oh one C three, has applied or asked for money for a land, flying high sculpture and landscaping project. And this is in the area over by where the exit for Highway sixty-three goes south. On the way to the bridge area and also right there by the new hotel. There's a new parking lot there that has a wide space. And a group of us believe that this is a good place to put a sculpture. And the sculpture that we've chosen is a flying eagle done by Steve Huffman, who does a lot of metal work and projects, large projects outside of Otomo area. And this project would have landscaping, large rock, and this large sculpture, which I sent you the pictures and all the budget for it. And so I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm not exactly sure. It's a lengthy discussion in my grant proposal.
And you're just asking for a donation from?
Yes, I'm, I'm asking for five thousand dollars from the county because this is good for our whole county. It's something that ties in with the conservation project that they have in January about the eagles and attracts a lot of people to our area. And it, it's not just Otomo by any means. It's certainly for the whole area.
What was the total budget for the project?
The total budget is eighty-eight thousand five hundred.
And how much of that, how much of that is that purchase of the sculpture? Do you know that?
The sculpture itself is, um, I don't have all those figures. I think it twenty-five thousand for the sculpture and then the additional rocks that go around it. The additional landscaping. So we have some, we have a private donation and we have applied for other grants as well.
And did you provide Kelly with information on the details? Did you know that, Kelly?
She, yeah, she should have it all.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
And I didn't see it for some reason. So, okay.
I have a copy of it. I can give you. Any other questions?
Nope, not for me.
Thank you.
Hey, the comments.
I think, Kelly, do you have an idea where that money could come from, what account you would suggest? Thank you. That's what I was thinking, yeah. Okay, okay, thank you. I'm generally inclined to go ahead, but on the other hand, if we need to do a little more research or thinking on it, that's fine with me too. So that would be my approach.
When, when are they, did you apply for the applications to the legacy? Do you know when those applications?
The Legacy Foundation.
Yeah. Different ones.
Do you know how soon you will know on all those other grants?
No.
I would be all right to put it on next time's agenda and then it gives us a little more time to.
Research it.
Research it, just, just to make sure we've got everything covered on our end. And then perhaps we'd want to put together a little bit of a condition with the, with our proposal back to you with our money that we would give you. Like if it doesn't, if the project doesn't happen, we don't, you know, some of those kinds of things. So, okay. Do we need to table it or just not act on it?
Yeah, we can just table it till the next meeting, put it on the next agenda.
And I'll make.
For the twenty-fifth, March twenty-fifth.
I'll make that motion to table it, but that certainly doesn't mean it's, it's over with, okay? I want you to, to know that, that we just want to do some more checking on it.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor, March twenty-fifth?
Aye.
All right, IHCC HUD project. Making Waplo County their responsible party?
I am gonna make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I think you spoke on it last time, so, um, the paperwork you sent, we've done that before in the county, Kelly, do you know? There's some things we have to, looks like we have to file and.
Good morning, Jennifer Wilson, Indian Hills Community College. Um, you guys are not going to have any responsibility financially at all through this. Um, what it is, is, um, Area fifteen will do an environmental study. That's a requirement for any HUD, um, project. They will continue to do that and then you oversee that saying that they have followed through with all those steps and that, um, everything is in order to move on so that then we can move on with the construction of the project.
Correct. I was reading here that we have to file something.
So, um, yes, it is through the Heroes program or the Heroes database. That is something that we will be able to, um, handhold you through with our contacts. And I think I listed the contacts that we have. We have some really great relationships built for individuals who have a longstanding done these, these types of programs. And, but many cities do this, whether it's through their city council that oversees it or their county, depending on where the project is, and ours is in the county.
Right, and this is a million dollar concreting project for CDLs.
Correct.
And just want to make sure we don't miss the part we have to do, so.
Yes.
Yep, if you're gonna hold our hand through it, make sure we get the proper paperwork filed. Just don't want, don't want to miss deadlines, so.
Yes, no, we will make sure that, that we know that, that we have.
I would say I'm Chris Bowers with Regional Planning Commission and, and we're a partner in this project with Indian Hills College and, and with the county, um, through our twenty-eighty agreement. Um, but we'll be the ones who are preparing the environmental review. So we're very familiar with the HUD program and the twenty-four CFR part fifty-eight. Uh, we'll prepare the environmental review, but as the responsible entity, the county will take legal responsibility for signing the environmental review.
Okay. Yep, last second. My biggest concern was I see we had to get on this database and just want to make sure we had somebody to do it and didn't miss the deadlines, so.
Yeah, yeah, we will help with that.
He's on top of it.
Yeah, we promise.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And blood draw for Healthy Choices Wellness Program. This benefits the employees and also gets them a discounted rate, right? Willing on their insurance. And I think we've chosen package E, which is forty dollars per employee. Um, employees will have the option to upgrade at their own expense if they choose. I think it goes up to seventy-five dollars if they wanted to add more stuff to it. Up to eighty dollars. Depending on what they, what all they want to check out, so. We have a motion for packaging.
I'll make the motion to proceed with the blood draw.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution nine dash two zero two five quarterly transfer to secondary roads fund. This is annual transfer quarterly, I believe we do. And this will put us at fifty percent of the fund. It's for three hundred thousand dollars, right, Brad? You don't know? I think it's three hundred thousand.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And approval of two thousand twenty-five pavement marking plans project fifty-five dash ninety. And we had a map of that, but we don't have the map. We're in making view of it. But you want to just basically give the overlay where they're marking?
Yeah, this will be on the farm-to-market system, uh, majority of the farm-to-market system, um, refreshing the current traffic markings. Routine maintenance type work with the farm-to-market fund eligible. And it's, uh, most efficient way to do it is to have a large project let through the DOT to do it, so.
All right, we have a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Brad. And officer training reimbursement agreement. Uh, this is for the new officer that the sheriff just hired. She came from Oskaloosa, right? And we're buying out her contract. Only thing I had Dawn was the date on the execution agreement says March twenty-fourth.
That's when I signed it.
We didn't hire him that quick, though, did we? We knew when he was hired.
No, what does it say, twenty-three? Yeah, it's obviously incorrect.
What's the correct date?
I say this, but the correct date is what you guys approved it today.
Yeah, it will work. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, reimbursement for a go gov deal transaction. Um, this has been a lengthy process. I know Dawn's struggled trying to get this figured out along with the treasurer's office and government. We sold a truck online to a guy from Florida, correct? And turned out he can't repair the vehicle because it was, the title is transferred salvaged and we can't. Or it wasn't salvaged, it was junk titled. Once the vehicle is junk titled in Iowa, you can't put another title back on it. So we're reimbursing him his purchase price of the truck and his shipping.
I'm gonna make motion to approve.
And could I ask a question before we second? Would it be, why do we have to pay for the transportation? Wouldn't the truck purchase reimbursement be appropriate? Do you have any reaction?
Asking me?
Yeah, thank you.
Sheriff's Office was just a go-through for gov deals to sell this stuff. It was through secondary roads with the previous engineer, so I guess you guys, uh, just do as you want.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I'll second that motion. But thanks for the information. Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recorder copy maintenance agreement with Bailey's also.
I'll make motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we got water heater problems in the jail and Dawn got three bids from Wingers Elite and A plus. Do we have a motion to choose one? Oh, Dawn, you want to say something?
No, I, I was prepared to, but if.
No, I, I was prepared to, but if.
If you want to, go ahead.
So what we have is four on-demand water heaters that was replaced a tank heater and they've been an ongoing maintenance nightmare since they're installed. I, I'm not sure when they were installed. I want to say 10 years ago, but uh, they're just a continuous issue. I, I think two tanks is going to provide some redundancy in case one of them goes down. We still have hot water in the jail as we're required to have. So um, those are the bids that uh, I got from uh, those three contractors.
Two hundred gallon water heaters.
Yep.
Alright, do we have a motion on one?
I'm gonna make a motion to go with the low bid from Elite Plumbing.
For forty-three thousand.
And I'm gonna. I'm debating because I know Dawn wants the, the Winger bid, but it's higher. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys asked me and I, I said Wingers has been in there since the place was built. They're familiar with it, but I'm not opposed to uh, Elite. I haven't heard nothing bad about them and, you know, so I.
Seem to be a pretty good company, so.
So I'm. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's uh, I think it's about, what'd we, what'd we say, 13 or 11 or 12?
Eleven thousand.
Difference, so I mean, that unfortunately, that fund is uh, getting down there and I think.
Every penny we can save counts, so.
Yeah, I think so. I'll second the motion then.
Alright, all those in favor of Elite?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, yeah, were we gonna do that a little?
Uh, yeah, let's just do local ops and sales tax. Because the other funds. Yeah, we're gonna try to negotiate with the city to pay a portion of that. They're supposed to pay part of the building there. Alright, and the county attorney restructured her county attorneys and did away with a deputy attorney position, made them all assistant county attorneys. And we need approval for that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and we're hiring Courtney Clement to fill a dispatcher position.
And I'll move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And making a part-timer, full-time in the jail.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have any other business? Willing?
We had talked um, during the budget meetings about, you know, where we're at on the workers' compensation and the upcoming experience month and everything. I've been working with um, the Safety Committee Director, Sheriff Dawn, and we're in the process of reviewing some of the policies and procedures that are required to be in place for the county. Um, we, we're working on having a special meeting, but it's imperative. I don't know if you can top down, all the department heads have to be um, in attendance. Some of the policies and procedures can be department-specific, but some of them have to be county-wide. And I do have a copy of that um, Safety Committee. And there's a couple of things in there that refer back to the policy handbook. So we're just in the process of reviewing all of those. And if there is an area in the county-wide book that refers to the individual departments, then we're gonna have to also verify that those policies are in there as well. One of them was the return to work, which refers back to the policy handbook. And you know, that law was updated recently, so we've got to be sure that every department head understands what the new requirement is for that um, in the law. So I just want you to be aware that that's coming down the pike. We've been reviewing those. And then we're gonna have a Safety Committee for all department heads and disseminate that information.
Do you have an idea when you'd want to have this meeting, you two?
Well, we've been going back and forth on times.
Yeah, we've been going back and forth. We were looking to have it here. Typically, we have it the third Thursday of the, of the month, but I think there's some meetings or. Yeah, there's some meetings that go on that week that wasn't working and then the previous week was ISAC, spring school, I think.
Well, that's this week. That's this week, yeah.
Well, this is this week I was thinking, but we, we've pushed it back. It'd probably be like the first week, April or somewhere around there. But I have, we haven't really nailed down. We're trying to nail it down.
Just, yeah, get us a date. We're, we're gonna have a department head meeting anyway. We'll just make it mandatory all attempts.
Okay, yep, that's it.
Well, if we can, I was gonna say, we could run it with, if you're having a mandatory meeting, there's no reason why we couldn't just.
Yeah, we could do it all at the same time, just.
Same time, correct.
Yeah, the important thing is it has to be adopted by not only the department heads, but also by the county and put into their manual. You know, we're trying to be proactive because of, you know, different claims that are.
Keep the funds down.
Exactly, yeah, and it's a big dollar ticket item difference, so, okay.
Thank you, Willie. Alright, Jared, I seen you jump up.
Good morning, guys. Uh, Jared Hirschberger with Dusty Fox Wind. I've just got a couple of things for you guys. We do have our community grant. Um, the, the, the second quarter of our community grant will be due at the end of uh, March. So uh, the two young ladies that have the, the eagle statue, I just uh, got my contact information for, uh, to them. So hopefully we can help out with that a little bit too. Um, for any of you going to ISAC, we are gonna have a presence at ISAC this week and we will uh, be at uh, we'll both have a booth and then a, uh, we're gonna host a reception uh, the last, the last night of ISAC at Buzzard Billy's. I think it's six to eight, so any.
Down the street, I think, so.
Yeah, any of you guys that are there are welcome to join us. And other than that, I have Matt, Matt Ebro here. He is the uh, development lead for the project. So if you guys have any particular questions, uh, especially uh, more detailed questions that I haven't been able to answer, he would be glad to take them, um, either now or after.
I'm sure we'll see you up there, so.
Alright, you going Darren?
Yep.
Great, we'll see you there. Thanks, guys.
Chad, anything? Miranda does.
I just wanted to give you um, an update where we're at with the comprehensive plan. Yesterday, MSA sent me a couple brochures. One, um, they, we do have a website called WaploCountyPlan.com where the public can go on and take a survey. They have a list of questions that they'd like to answer. And also there's a crowdsourced map, so the public can go on that map and designate an area that they might want to see more conservation or they want to see a subdivision. You know, some interest that the public wants to see for Waplo County for the next 20 years. So um, we will get these brochures out. Uh, we'll list them on our website. And kind of take them around the community and other organizations to kind of help get the word out that we need input and the public's input.
Okay. Facebook it.
Tom Lozio, 2301 North Court. I just want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors. Had the opportunity to sit in on several of your budget meetings and I'm not sure the public appreciates the work you do and the fact that you went through the budget line by line and had some good discussion, a lot of good questions. Uh, I think it's especially difficult when you're faced with the projected deficits and the reduction in local control by our, our state legislature. So um, thank you again for the hard work and, and I'm not sure it's gonna be easy for people to understand that there may have to be some adjustments down the road. And um, I think that people want to know, they should come and sit in on those meetings and, and watch what you go through. So again, you did a good job and, and I just was impressed with the level of give and take between all the three of you and uh, thought it was a good process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, I'd just like to make an announcement on April 29th. All elected officials in the county are gonna be at Bridgeview for a meeting over the emergency medical services. So just letting the public know that every elected official has been invited, every fire chief, every fire board member, mayor, city councilman. There, including Jack. Alright, other than that, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.